All right, thank you. We'd like to welcome everybody out to the Mesa City Council Meeting for November the 4th. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I could please invite everyone to please stand for the moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilmember David Luna.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under our first agenda item, awards and recognitions, we have one item to deal with tonight. This is, I appreciate the community feedback to this problem in our community. Tonight, we are proclaiming January of next year, 2020, as Stand Up, Speak Up, and Save a Life Month. Again, that's Stand Up, Speak Up, and Save a Life Month. This month is important because sadly, youth suicide is an issue in our community and in our local schools. This program is designed to create awareness and empower our youth to report concerns that they have for their friends or others when they notice a warning sign in a person or online, when they notice a warning sign either in person or online. I'm pleased that tonight, we're joined with the Mayor's Youth Committee, who are here representing the youth of Mesa. I'm very proud of them. They participated in a Safe Talk Suicide Awareness Training session provided by the Suicide Prevention Resource Center recently, and they're taking that message back to their schools. So thank you, guys, for doing that. The City of Mesa has also stepped up. With the help of the Police Department, the city's librarians have completed mental health first aid training, and members of the Housing Department are scheduled to take the training as well. These city's employees engage with the public all day long, and they are now trained to recognize someone who may need help. So again, I want to thank everyone inside the City of Mesa, inside the schools, who are raising awareness of youth suicide and, as the name suggests, standing up, speaking up, and saving lives. Here to tell us more about Stand Up, Speak Up, and Save a Life is Sarah Roof. Sarah, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council. We are really excited to be back. I serve on the planning team for what's become an annual youth mental health conference that serves the entire valley. And we are so proud that the East Valley is showing up strong and supporting yet again. And new this year is, of course, the Mayor's Youth Committee, and I am so honored to be able to meet some of these leaders, not future leaders, actual leaders today, because they are going to be the ones to literally save lives, online, in person, with their friends, with their family. So thank you all for doing what you're doing, and keep it up, keep it up. Thank you so much, and we're happy to have the City of Mesa's support yet again.
You bet. So Sarah, if you don't mind, I'm going to invite the council to come down and join me in presenting you with this proclamation. And I'd like to, let's have the Mayor's Youth Committee come up for the photograph as well, representing the youth of the City of Mesa, okay? Thank you. Guys, come on over here. Okay, hopefully we don't cover it all up, but we're just trying to do now. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right. Well, I'll turn sideways.
Okay, we'll take directions from these photographers right here, okay? Okay, thank you, guys. You guys send your notes for doing this next week, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Good job. Take that messaging back.
I should mention, another great reason the Mayor's Youth Committee is here is next week, they will be conducting a mock city council meeting where they'll play roles of the mayor, and the city manager, and council members, and concerned citizens. So I think that's going to be a great event. Look forward to participating in that. So thank you for all the good work you're doing in our community. Next, we will take action on the consent agenda. Invite Randy Pollockar to come forward to read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for commemorative Air Force Museum, one-day event, March 14th, 2017 North Green Fuel Road. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Downtown Mesa Association, one-day event for November 23rd at the Mesa Amphitheater, 263 North Center Street. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Wings of Flight Foundation Incorporated, one-day event, December 7th at Falcon Field Airport, 4863 East Falcon Drive. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Goldwater Brewing Company, 5942 East Longbow Parkway. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Party Pops, 127 West Juanita Avenue. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Circle K, 9230 East University Drive. Item 3G, act on liquor license application for Fabies Market, 726 East Broadway Road. Item 3H, act on liquor license application for Red, White, and Brew, 6740 East McDowell Road. Item 3I, act on liquor license application for Downtown 12 West, 12 West Main Street. Item 4A, act on one-year renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance and workers' compensation self-insurance surety bond. Item 4B, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for automated vehicle location equipment and related services for various city departments as requested by the Information Technology Department. Item 4C, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for repair and refurbishment services of metal bins and roll-off containers for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4D, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for herbicide application and vegetation removal services for the Transportation Department. Item 4E, act on contract to purchase two trailers, one replacement, and one addition for the Transportation Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 4F, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for General Motors OEM, auto, and light-duty truck parts for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4G, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for major repair services for Caterpillar generators for the Water Resources, Energy Resources, and Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Departments. Item 4H, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for automotive dealers eligibility list for citywide departments as requested by the Fleet Services and Mesa Fire and Medical Departments. Item 4I, act on extension and dollar limit increase to the term contract for heavy-duty automotive body repair services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4J, act on contract for baseline road improvements, 24th Street to Consolidated Canal and Val Vista Drive improvements, baseline road to US 60 Project. The original project is funded by authorized 2008 street bonds, 2013 street bonds, and 2010 gas bonds. The additional work is funded by Highway User Recovery Funds. Item 4K, act on contract for Commercial Water Meter Assemblies Project Phase 11B. This project is funded by 2014 authorized water bonds. Items 4L, 4M, 4N, 4O, and 4P have been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Water Resources for the Regional Water Use It Wisely Media Campaign. Item 5B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Tempe to reflect the change in advertising providers for the Regional Water Use It Wisely Media Campaign. Item 5C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds for equipment, reoccurring subscriptions, and training for the Police Department's Terrorism Liaison Program. Item 5D, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds for an aviation video downlink system for the Police Department's Aviation Division. Item 5F, act on resolution extinguishing a temporary retention easement located at the northeast corner of South Power Road and East Railroad to allow for the development of a mixed-use retail and condominium project. This was requested by the city. Item 5G, act on resolution extinguishing a public utilities easement located at 2439 East Catalina Avenue for the purpose of gaining compliance with the city code regarding building a permanent structure over a public utilities easement. This was requested by the property owner. Item 5H, act on resolution approving the Electric Integrated Resource Plan in conformance with the federal regulations that qualifies the City of Mesa to receive electric power generated at federally-owned hydroelectric plants. The plan will be submitted to the Western Area Power Administration upon council approval. Item 5I, act on resolution approving the purchase of and authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts with terms of up to three years for two firm electric power supplies and associated energy of up to 10 megawatts each. Item 5G is, excuse me, item 5J has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5K, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a Third Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement with MHA III LLC for development of approximately 1.6 acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of First Avenue and McDonald. The proposed Third Amendment extends the deadline to complete construction of the 72-unit market-rate multifamily project to December of 2021. Item 6A, act on ordinance regarding ZON 19-00444 within the 7100 through 7200 blocks of East University Drive and within the 100 through 400 blocks of North Sun Valley Boulevard on the south side of University Drive. Modification of an approved planned area development and associated conditions of approval and site plan modification. This will allow an amendment to remove a condition of approval limiting the square footage allowed for medical offices. Item 6B is zoning case ZON 18-000891 for property located at 535 West Baseline Road. This case is for continuance to the November 18th city council meeting. Item 7A, act on subdivision plat map of dedication for Legends of Mesa located within the 8400 block of Broadway Road and within the 200 to 400 blocks of South Hawes Road, located on the northeast corner of Broadway and Hawes. Item 7B, act on subdivision plat Power Square A Condominium Plat, 2055 South Power Road, located on the southeast corner of Power and Baseline Roads. Item 8A has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 9B is zoning case ZON 19-00473 for the property located within the 3100 block of Southeast Ridge. This case is for continuance to the December 9th council meeting. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Pollockar. Ms. Mickelson, have there been any additional requests to speak on an item on the consent agenda? Okay. I do have cards on 4N, O, P, and 9A, but there's nothing new. Okay. Counsel, is there, I see that Mr. Freeman's made a motion, Mr. Luna has seconded it, and adopting the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of adopting the consent agenda. The next item, then off of our agenda, I mean, on the regular council agenda, will be item 4L. This is the Mesa City Center First Guaranteed Maximum Price, City Infrastructure Improvements, District 4. Counsel, is there any, Mr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I requested this be pulled off a consent. The reason I'm pulling 4L off is due to the fact that our financial projections are showing that our enterprise fund will be depleted in four years, and I don't think it's responsible to keep spending more money in our general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Just in response, I know you did ask a question downstairs about, I believe, item 8A and our, you asked a great question about our reserves being depleted in, I think it was, three or four years. I'll just comment, I'd like to comment on that as well. I've been mayor for five years, and I think each year, at the beginning of the year, we're given projections that shows that, with the goal of spending down our reserves. And each year, at the end of the, because those projections are so conservative, we actually have not succeeded in spending down our reserves in the way that we anticipated doing that. So I don't share a concern about depleting our reserves. I think it's actually our intention and our plan to bring the reserves from their current over 30% reserves down to somewhere closer to 8% to 10%. So I don't share the concern over that. I frankly would be surprised if we get close to 8% or 10%. Mr. Freeman?
So, Mr. Brady, maybe you can help me with this. I believe this build-out is through bonding. We're using bond money to do this?
Yeah.
So it's not coming out of our enterprise fund? Or is...
So we are talking about 4L, correct?
Correct, 4L.
So 4L is only, what it speaks to, the item that council's being asked to do, is a set to guarantee maximum price for the off-site budget for three separate projects. The studios, innovation studios, the ASU building at the city center, and the plaza. So these are all the off-site improvements we visited about last week. And so we've just, because we're going to be under construction in the same area for all of those projects, we've just combined the budget for the contractor, all combined. So most of these dollars are in categories, because they're off-site, they're in, a little bit in water, a little bit in wastewater, some in streets, and then there was communications fiber, and that was a large amount. That was like $900, $750,000, and that's going to come from savings that's already occurred in the IT department. And the rest of them will come from the variety of those utilities or the streets that I just mentioned. So those are existing funds or existing capacities for each of those. Those will have no material impact on them. And one of that, and part of that, the $250,000 worth of these improvements were already approved, were already included in the public safety bond. So we're just taking the opportunity to bring together several different projects and put it under one contractor and move forward. So the, it comes from a variety of different sources, all of which will have no material impact on their budgets or their funding.
All right, thank you. I made a motion to approve it.
Okay.
If there's any other discussion.
Thank you. Well, I'll just, Mr. Brady, so we're talking about downtown infrastructure, street repairs, street repaving, water, sewer, electric, gas. But we're fair to say that, so this is common area, these are kind of the aging infrastructure of 150-year-old downtown.
And I believe you received a presentation, or in that presentation, a significant portion of this was coming from the electric utility to do upgrades and safety and reliability improvements that, again, really don't have anything to do directly with these projects, but because, but it's important to keep this building and missile plazas and the existing buildings provide reliable power to them. So again, while we're tearing up streets and making these improvements, the electric utility came and recommended that we include the funding for those projects in this contract, that otherwise they would have to do two or three years from now, so opposed to not doing it now, but coming back later and tearing up a brand-new street and putting in electric utilities. And there's a lot of reliability issues. There's some of the underground vaults that we're trying to address that have been a concern in downtown Phoenix, and there were some issues with underground vaults. So this is a variety of things, and it doesn't really have any material effect. Or I'm not sure I understand the connection between this and the enterprise fund, fund balance. There really isn't. These are capital projects, and it's spread around a variety of different sources.
I just want to clarify what we're voting on. So I mean, the description specifically says, city infrastructure necessary to support the ASU building, the plaza, and the studios.
As well as future development and improvements in the area.
Yeah. So I mean, if the primary goal of this is to, for the ASU building, you know, like I said, if we're projecting our reserve balance is drawing down to nothing, then I think that it's, you know, we shouldn't be spending more money where we don't need to. It's the same reason I didn't vote for the ASU building in the first place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
Mr. Brady, is this a common practice that we do when we build parks, or we build, when there's capital improvements throughout the, when we're... Yeah. So maybe the best example is when we build fire stations. We may build a fire station where we need to run a water line to or provide sewer to. This is, those are off-site improvements. And this is something that we shared with council as part of how this would be funded early on. In the process, there was a budget for the building and the campus, and then there was a separate identification of off-site improvements, which was separate and apart. So again, this isn't any change, other than what we've done is, as staff has gone through and evaluated the needs for these three different buildings, or, sorry, two buildings and the plaza, at the same time, as they're reviewing that, they're looking at the existing infrastructure in the area and saying, you know, while we're already trenching and tearing up the street, let's address some of our reliability and safety issues that exist today in this area. So quite a bit of this could be associated just with our existing infrastructure, aging infrastructure, and upgrading that, that would be done. And I think, Frank, I asked you the question, it was like a three-year window when you would anticipate we would have done that. Is that fair? Yeah. So in three years. So again, let's not wait three years and tear up streets and sidewalks that we've just improved. Let's do them now. So we're going to save a lot of money by doing a lot of shared trenching for these utilities, and we think that's important in looking after, being very judicious with the taxpayer dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this? Mr. Freeman's made a motion, Mr. Luna has seconded it. Please cast your vote. Vote is six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our agenda is item 4M. This is authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the employment contract with the city auditor. Any comments on this item?
I have a comment. So I wanted to, I'm actually voting against these four charter raises. It's not personal to the individuals that I'm voting against, but over the last 20 years, if you take the average of these four positions, we've increased their salary by 60%, while the average person in Mesa that we represent has only seen a 36% increase in their salary. So to me, I can't fundamentally vote to give ourselves raises at a rate faster than the people that we govern. It just doesn't feel fundamentally right. So I'll be voting no on these issues, but I hope that the four individuals don't take it personally. It has nothing to do with them.
Okay, well, I doubt that these individuals have received a 60% pay raise in the last four years.
So, Mayor, I understand the math. That's interesting math. But I'll assure you, and I think the council knows this, maybe we should say this publicly, that the percentage increase on the salary for each of these individuals is consistent with what all other employees have.
I apologize, I misspoke. I didn't catch, over the last 20 years, not the last, if I said four years, then I missed, I meant to say the last.
But again, I'm just saying that I don't, I think at most times, the increase for these positions has been fairly consistent with what other employees have received.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Luna has made a motion. Mr. Freeman has seconded it. Please cast your vote.
Mayor, I believe there was speaker on, was there a speaker on these items?
I have a speaker on items 4N, O, and P. Is that right, Mr. Farnsworth? So we'll take that up with the next item. Thank you, though. All right, votes have been cast, six in favor, Mr. Whitaker voting nay. Next are agenda items 4N, O, and P. And again, this is the employment contracts for the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. Mr. Farnsworth, you filled out three cards for each of these items, and I understand you wish to be heard, speak of them cumulatively. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, please come to the microphone. Generally, we allow three minutes, as you know.
I'll take 10.
Well, you can have nine.
Okay.
Three times three is nine, the last time I checked.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think what Councilman Whitaker said is, probably ought to be taken in consideration when you consider that you as a council and you as city employees are the servants of the people, that when you want to distance yourself and place yourselves in separate categories and groups and outrace the rest of the horses in the race, I think there ought to be some internal subscription to look at in this process. I'd like to compliment Ms. Mickelson. Every inner reaction that I've had with her as the city clerk has been an amazing reception. It has been open, congenial. Every question that I have ever asked has been handled with a great deal of respect in an absolute nonpartisan way. And I want to compliment her for that, and many of the other city employees that I have, that are not on this list tonight, or I would mention them by name. I appreciate their response to me as a citizen of this community. Now, with our city attorney and collectively with our city manager, I can't say the same thing. I have been treated with them individually and from their departments with contempt. I have asked simple questions as a citizen of this city to get information that I am due to have, and it has been pulling hen's teeth to get the information from these two individuals. If they treat others that they have treated me, they do not deserve this raise. In fact, they deserve to be fired. Because when you're working on the public dime, then you owe a respect that is above and beyond anything else, even a neighbor. City Manager Brady confronted me right here in this council and verbally assaulted me over the issue of ASU and the lie that was told by many of you here about whether or not there was a $25.5 million appraisal on the record property. He's told at least three times that he has apologized for that error, and yet, I'm the person that that apology is due, and it has never arrived. I will continue to bring it up until that apology is received, and until Mr. Brady can be man enough to the position that he holds representing this whole city. I will continue to bring it up until the citizens of this city know about it. Mr. Smith has committed, has treated me with disrespect when I've asked him questions in his department, when I've asked for these public record requests, have treated me as if I do not exist, taking weeks, 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 and months to give me answers to the information that I am due as a citizen of this city. I want them reprimanded in some format, and I will be filing against them some form of disciplinary request for conduct unbecoming an employee of this city. And if I was you as the council tonight, I would hold off awarding them an increase in their pay until that matter is settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Mr. Smith, do we need to vote on these separately?
Mayor, council, unless a council member wants to vote on it differently, no, you can do one motion.
All right. Counsel, is it all with you, if we can do this as one motion?
Yes.
I have one more question, specifically the city manager. It's, in the contract that we're looking at, two extra vacation hours, is that, that's a per month, is that correct? Somebody answer that?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's currently at, how many hours per month? Okay, so we're looking to increase that to 22 hours per month. So that's roughly 250 hours a year, six and a half weeks. That one specifically seems excessive to me. That's the only comment that I want to make before we vote on these issues.
Okay. We will then consider agenda items 4N, O, and P together. Mr. Freeman has made a motion. Mr. Luna has seconded that motion. Please cast your vote. The vote is six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our, off of our consent agenda is item 5J. This is approving the purchase of and authorizing city manager to enter contracts with terms up to 25 years for renewable electric power supplies. Any council...
And if I was you as the council tonight, I would hold off awarding them an increase in their pay until that matter is settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Mr. Smith, do we need to vote on these separately?
Unless, Mayor, council, unless a council member wants to vote on it differently, no, you can do one motion.
All right. Council, is it all right with you if we do this as one motion?
Yes.
I have one com, one more question specifically to the city manager. It's in the contract that we're looking at, two extra vacation hours. Is that, that's a per month? Is that correct? Somebody answer that?
Yes.
Yeah. And it's currently at how many hours per month? Okay. So we're looking to increase that to 22 hours per month. So that's roughly 250 hours a year, six and a half weeks. That one specifically seems excessive to me. That's the only comment that I want to make before we vote on these issues.
Okay. We will then consider agenda items 4N, O, and P together. Mr. Freeman has made a motion, Mr. Luna has seconded that motion. Please cast your vote. The vote is six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. The next item on our, off of our consent agenda is item 5J. This is approving the purchase of an authorized city manager into contracts with terms up to 25 years for renewable electric power supplies. Any counsel, Mr. Whitaker?
One comment. I have a profound amount of respect for Frank, and I know that you guys are deciding to sign these 20-year contracts with solar, but my biggest concern with this is locking ourselves into a rate of solar when we're seeing drastic price decreases in PV and solar technology. So I trust Frank's opinion, but I, you know, just, I have a hard time absorbing this one. And I just want to say I appreciate everything you do, Frank.
And, Mr. Whitaker, I think you asked that question during our study session. I thought it was a great question. I think, Frank, correct me if I'm, why don't you come up and give us your response to that? I'll, just paraphrasing, I think, this, these are contracts for 15 megawatts, and that's what, tell us, let us know, what percentage of our electric portfolio are we talking about here?
Frank McCray with the City of Mesa's Energy Resources Department, and joining me is Tony Kadoran, our Energy Resources Program Manager in case something comes up that needs to be expanded upon. Currently, we have 20% of our energy portfolio met with renewable hydro contracts, very low-priced, very reliable sources of supply. This contract would render up to about 6% of our additional energy requirements. Where the pricing issue comes into play is indeed prices have come down in solar PV of the type that we're contemplating contracting for here. We've looked at this from not only an immediate price impact on our customers, but also over the 20 years and 25-year life of the contract. So we feel confident that it's a time to pull the trigger on some additional renewable resources into our portfolio. Our customers, through our surveys, have indicated that while they're concerned about the prices of resources, they want us to acquire more renewable resources. These contracts, as long as they're negotiated and finalized in a way that's consistent with what we've presented, we think it's a good contract to go forward. Now's the time to try and develop this project and have us contract for the power output.
Okay. Thanks. And I, I think the point that Mr. Whitaker was asking about in our study session was the duration of these contracts and whether it's why, given the volatility, is it, is that the reason to enter into these contracts or the reason not to?
It's, it's, it's a reason for both. We wouldn't likely be contracting for 100% of our supplies from solar because solar doesn't always produce power when we need it. It peaks at about midday, and our customer demand peaks between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. So we need other types of resources. A 25-year contract of this nature, it's a fixed-end price, and it allows us to basically hedge our cost over the 20- or 25-year term of the agreement. So that gives us some assurity that if, if, if anything else goes, deviates, or varies significantly from what our current forecasts are, we're going to have that fixed price and hopefully reliable supply of power for the term of the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments on this agenda item? All right. Thank you very much, Frank. Mr. Luna has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. The vote is six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting no. The next item off of our consent agenda is item 8A. This is the adoption of the notice of intention and setting January the 27th of next year as the date for the public hearing on a notice of intention to adjust utility rates. Any counsel comments on this item? Mr. Whitaker?
So I'm pulling this one off the consent as well. I won't be voting for the utility rate increases because our current projections show us running out of money in our funds in four years, and we currently have the highest water, wastewater, and solid waste costs already, and I think we need to have a more serious conversation about the sustainability of our utilities.
Okay. So, again, just so we're clear, this is not, we're not adjusting utility rates today. This is setting a hearing for January the 27th to discuss that item, right? Mr. Freeman has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your votes. Six in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting no. The next item off of our consent agenda is item 9A. This is a zoning case. This is the South Green, 1728 South Greenfield Road, located south of the US 60 freeway. We have a vote from planning and zoning, which is a procedural denial because it was a 3-3 tie vote. Is there anyone from the applicant that wishes to be heard on this case?
Yes.
Welcome.
Neil Feizer from RK Architects. We're asking to rezone the existing shopping center from a light industrial to limited commercial to allow for a pawn shop. We believe a pawn shop is a retail use and matches the adjacent retail uses and has synergy with the adjacent retail uses. The pawn shop is family-owned, family-oriented, and provides a service to the surrounding neighbors and families. A pawn shop provides a service to the community to provide short-term loans that can't be matched with traditional lenders. In comparison, a payday loan was in the existing building where this pawn shop is proposed. A pawn shop, we feel, serves a community in a better way than a payday loan. The proposed pawn shop is a quality retail facility, which is clean, well-organized, and maintains the highest standards for its operations and patrons. Pawn shops have a negative stereotype, which is fueled by Hollywood and frankly are untrue. The pawn shop owner is here and can answer any of your questions at great length on how they don't cater to patrons that pass along stolen goods or patrons involved in illegal activities. We exceed all the requirements to approve this use permit. The closest pawn shop is several miles away, when only 1,200 feet is required, and the landlord, the property owner, is here as well, and he can talk about reaching out to the Navy Federal and the Sportsman's Warehouse, who has written letters in opposition to this. You want to talk about your?
Sure. Yeah. My name's James Neal. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, H.H. Greenfield Gateway LLC. We've owned the property for the last year and a half. It's been a project that is specific to this, specific space, has been vacant for, I mean, several years longer than I can, than I can recall. At one point, it did have, as Neil mentioned, payday loans, tenant in the property, which is, in my opinion, a very similar use. We, we are asking to rezone it to what the property type really should have been rezoned to in the first place. It's a commercial shopping center that should have been zoned as limited commercial, just wasn't done when the property was developed for Walmart and Sportsman's Warehouse and multiple, you know, multi-tenant shop retail. So we've given out notices, sent those out. We held a neighborhood meeting. We didn't have anybody show up to that to express any concerns, other than the store manager for Sportsman's Warehouse. We discussed and went through their concerns with it. We've reached out, understand they sent letters, seen copies of those. We've reached out to the Sportsmans to discuss it further, as well as the, the bank, financial institution, haven't received any, any feedback, haven't, haven't been able to connect with them and get a call back. So, yeah, I mean, we've tried to address it. We feel it's a, you know, use that fits in. We have a third-party DMV services in the property already. Again, we've had auto-titled loans and just feel that it's, you know, a normal, a normal use that should be allowed.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We do have a blue card that's been filed to speak on this. This is Christine Ramos. Welcome, Christine. You have three minutes.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I am the branch manager of the Navy Federal Credit Union in the same shopping center. I just wanted to give a little background. Navy Federal Credit Union is a not-for-pro, not-for-profit federal, federally chartered credit union. It's based on our membership base of military members, they're veterans, and their family members. We have 24,000-plus members that are military-based members in just the Mesa community alone that we service at the Mesa branch for Navy Federal. We, when we service our members, we try to look for sites that are in specific locations where we can have an upstanding clientele and free of other sort of predatory lending like a pawn shop would bring in. So Navy Federal is opposed to bringing in this pawn shop based on our membership base and our military members. We do not want them to get taken advantage of by these predatory lending rates where they would otherwise be able to get serviced through us. And despite providing information to the property manager for my personal contact information at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, I have not been contacted. So I'm not sure, maybe something got crossed up there, but I have not been contacted by the landlord in regards to that, despite what they had mentioned there. Navy Federal, like I said, is opposed to the zoning change, and we did speak on behalf of that at the Planning and Zoning Committee. If the zoning were to change as described, it may cause us to reevaluate our long-term strategy for this particular location. We are actively searching locations to install more of our branches within the greater Phoenix market, so we would look to shift our business to one of those other locations if this was to go through.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Whitaker?
I have a comment if anybody has any questions. I've received a ton of comments like this from the neighborhood businesses in the area, as well as feedback from the P&amp;Z board, that the proposed rezoning council use permit and the site plan don't match the planned character type of the area. Based on this, I move that we deny the proposed rezone council use permit and site plan review.
Okay. Thank you. There's been a motion made for denial, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I did watch the planning and zoning meeting and have received quite a few emails as well on this. While I do respect that the business that you have sounds wonderful as far as the type of pawn shops that we have in Mesa, but my opinion, and I know, I think the city is looking at is the number of pawn shops that we have in the city as a whole. And if it was taking the place of another pawn shop, I would be in support, but I feel this is in addition. Also, on the council use permit, there are provisions that if, if, if we feel that it can be detrimental to businesses within the center or within the city. And since we have received the concerns from the businesses in that shopping center, I will be voting in denial.
Okay. Thank you. And just so the applicant knows, I frankly disagree that it was incorrectly zoned initially. I think my problem with this is, is you're, we're talking about rezoning the entire property, the entire development, and I think changing the character of that to commercial is not consistent with the best interests of the, of the neighborhood and the community. So I'll be voting against this case as well. Okay. A motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes. Oh, wait. I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I have one question.
Yes.
So when a nay would be to deny the rezone, is that correct?
The motion was made that this would be?
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying.
Right. The motion is to, is to deny the zoning. So a yes vote would be against the pawn shop. Okay, Mr., it's a six ayes with Mr. Luna voting nay. All right. So the motion passes. Next item off of our consent, well, that concludes the regular items. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. We have, Ms. Mickelson, have any other cards?
No.
Okay. We have one card, Mr. Virgil Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth, you have three minutes.
Mayor and counsel, by way of reminder, for nearly two years now, this council has refused to acknowledge to the citizens the backdoor process by which the ASU building has come to be. You've refused to acknowledge that you took up this cause without permission of the citizens of Mesa. Yes, the press has occasionally reminded you that you did this against the vote of the citizens, but none of you have ever done the same. All you've been able to counter with is the building is going to be worth it. I, for one, am not alone. I have pointed out that the cost of this project would exceed $120 million eventually, not the $63.5 million that you've been telling the public. Now it's being revealed that associated costs are raising the cost of this project beyond your projected and publicly presented costs, costs that you have intentionally withheld from the citizens to keep us in the dark about the final costs of this project. What other costs are you hiding, and which you will slowly reveal when you think that the citizens have forgotten about the latest? In order to try and stay under budget, I suspect that you're gutting the building and some of the amenities. I agree with Councilman Thompson that the, the assessment of the building lacks any type of wow features. In fact, it's just as ugly as the Phoenix Convention Center. I would like this council to provide for the citizens of Mesa a projected final cost, including all interest that will be paid in the process. This denial, lack of transparency, is nothing short of a ticking time bomb I don't think the citizens of Mesa are going to forget anytime soon. I love Mesa. I love this city, but I think that each of you as a councilman elected to represent us, I think you owe the citizens of this city a vote of transparency that you'll be upfront and above-board in all your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. I mean, you know, we can't respond because you've chosen to, rather than discussing this item under the regular agenda, you've done it under items from citizens present, so we can't respond to the things that you've said. So I wish I could. Counsel, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna. On behalf of, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.